Welcome to the Bossier City Council Meeting, July 6, 2020. We'll have the invocation by Councilmember Scott Irwin and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember David Montgomery Jr. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us, Lord. Lord, we thank you for all the blessings that you've bestowed on our community. Lord, we just pray for a successful development of a vaccine for the COVID virus. We pray for peace all across the country, Lord. And, Lord, we pray for wisdom for our nation, our state, and for us in this city council meeting today. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please face the flag and join me in our Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Larkin.
Here.
Mr. Irwin.
Here.
Mr. Darby.
Present.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Harvey.
Here.
All present.
Approve the minutes of the June 16, 2020, meeting in dispense with the reading.
So move. Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Mr. Montgomery, did yours pop up?
Yeah, it's, um...
Yes, sir. There are no amendments to the agenda.
Okay. Motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Remind me tomorrow. Just say, "Remind me tomorrow."
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Harvey.
Under committee reports, Mr. Gordon Mosley, Assistant City Attorney with the Property Acquisition Report.
First, the Walter O. Bigby Carriageway Project. I talked to David Volantine this week, and he has indicated that our last property, Brigham Dentistry, we have came to an agreement on the design of the actual parking lot that we are going to rearrange. Once we get those plans finalized, Core Engineering is going to start on the construction plans, and then, once they finish the construction plans, Brigham's are going to send it out and get three bids for the project. And, once we have that, we'll be finished for right of way for the Walter O. Bigby Carriageway Project. Melrose Plantation Project, we now have all property required for this project, so it's ready to be put out to bid. Also, on Coleman Street, we have acquired all the properties. It was two since we last met, and so that project as well, we are ready for bid on that right of way. It's been completed, DOTD has approved it right of way. On the old Menden, a couple of utility projects, we've acquired the Glomax projects since we last met. We had them, they agreed to it before we last met, but we lost the deed in the mail that they had signed, and so we got them to re-sign a different deed, and so we're ready to go on that, that project. And then, we also had in East Texas Tipperary Construction Servitude that we've acquired. So, all projects have been completed as far as right of way goes, except Walter O. Bigby, and we have that one property left, which is Brigham Dentistry. And that's all I have.
Any questions from the council?
Good job there, Mr. Gordon.
I have one question.
Mr. Larkin.
On that, there was one property there, it was like an oil change thing or something. Did that, did we just expropriate that, or did it get settled up?
Yes, sir. We have, we are going to have, we, let's see, those two properties, we have to expropriate, but we are just, they're what are called access-restricted parcels. We don't actually need them to put the projects out to bid, but what we're doing is cutting them off their access to Benton Road, so ultimately, we're going to have to expropriate. It's the Nichols and the Moore property, like I said, that we don't need that for bid. But, let's see, the Nichols, the Nichols property, we have filed expropriation, and then the Moore property, we're updating the expropriation proceedings, and we're going to file those, that expropriation proceeding in the next couple of weeks.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Montgomery.
Thank you all.
All right, we have an additional report from Mr. Justin Haydel of Manshack, regarding the Walter O. Bigby Carriageway.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. I placed on each of your desks a updated schedule and a little written update that I prepared for the project. It kind of, the update kind of follows the schedule from top to bottom. So, the design remains to be one of the critical path items. This is truly a critical path schedule. We have a pretty big meeting tomorrow here in Bossier with all parties involved that are doing the design, so hopefully, we can flesh some matters out and proceed accordingly. The last time I was here, I informed the council that we had made a submittal to UP on May the 6th, and that they had told us it'd be four to six weeks before we got a response from them. They actually responded while the council meeting was going on. I didn't see the response until after the council meeting, but they conditionally approved the application, which I think is good news, because they don't really have any comments on the bridge, any issues with the bridge, they said will be handled during construction with the local people that work for UP, you know, to make sure the trains can keep moving during construction. The only issue they have that they reported on in their, in the first submittal, and again, in this submittal, which is not approved, is a drainage, the drainage where Citizens Bank Drive is going to go, where the bridge lands on the flat land over there by Citizens Bank Drive. The design calls for what they call a special ditch, and UP doesn't like it, because the water flows from that ditch to their ditch. And, that's just an issue that we're going to have to deal with and figure out another way to do the drainage. Hopefully, after we have that resolved and resubmit to them, it'll be approved. There will be one more submittal to make after this next one, which is called the final submittal, which they tell me should only take them two weeks to approve. So, I've got plenty enough time on the schedule for us to obtain the permit from them. Then you have all of the utility relocations, you can just look at that. There's two companies, Suddenlink and Verizon. Suddenlink, we just heard from them yesterday, so they, after all the emails and calls, we finally got with somebody who hopefully can help us out to figure out what needs to be moved. And Verizon, they have given us a schedule for their design and permitting, but they won't tell us yet how long it's going to take them to relocate their infrastructure. A new addition to the schedule is DOTD permits. We met with DOTD the day after I was here last time, on June the 7th, and come to find out, we have to get actually six separate permits from them. You need a permit for three separate locations on the project, US 80 at Hamilton Road, Benton at Shed, and Benton at Walter O. Bigby, and there are different types of permits, so it totals six permits. The levy board permit, you know, we're still working from them. Of course, DOTD is their review agency, and they're involved in that, in the core with the levies and all. DOTD made a pretty substantial submittal to us based on their review of the drawings as they stand now, which we'll be discussing those tomorrow and addressing those. The core wants another seepage analysis done, which we've got Artiman and Associates working on that, so hopefully, we can get that done sooner rather than later and satisfy those permitting agencies. So, the last thing I have is the lighting design for the roadway portion will be done by Pertland Associates, and I'll be submitting a contract for the city council's approval to Mr. Hall to put on the agenda at the next meeting to hire them to do the roadway lighting portion. The bridge lighting portion is in NTB's contract, so that's all I have. If anybody has any questions.
Any questions from the council?
Not here.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Haydel.
All right. Thank you.
Unfinished business?
Adopt an ordinance transfer in $64,000 from the Police Department 2020 capital budget to the traffic engineering budget to accomplish new electrical services for camera installations in the city of Bossier City.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance revoking the authorization to refund bonds as set forth in ordinance number 44 of 2020 and ordinance number 53 of 2020. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience?
What could, is there a, what are we doing with this?
We previously authorized these bonds to be issued, and so we did a resolution terminating that effect, but we also put an ordinance in effect because it was an ordinance that authorized it. We have an ordinance revoking the authority to do it, so that we're no longer going to the market with refunding those bonds.
We're just, we're just not going to have this, we're just abandoning...
The numbers, the numbers were not sufficient, the savings was not sufficient to warrant the refunding, the cost of refund.
Okay, that, that's where I was, I, I didn't get that earlier, and I'm, that's the part I was missing, so, great, thank, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Mr. Darby, are you, okay. Motion carrying. Adopt an ordinance to purchase rotating assemblies for the 14-inch and 8-inch pumps and to repair and replace 14-inch pumps that failed at a cost of $120,000 from the sewer capital and contingency funds. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carrying.
New business?
Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P-20-14, Bossier City Fire Department burn building.
Counsel, the engineer's estimate for this project is $1,238,000. It's funded from the land acquisition fund. There are two addendums. The first addendum provided the sign-in sheet to the mandatory pre-bid meeting, revised the public works bid form, and changes specs and drawings. And the second addendum made changes to specs and drawings. Okay, the first bid is from Boggs &amp; Poole Contracting Group, Inc. Bid bond is included. They acknowledged the addendums. It's for $1,218,000. The next bid is from Cochran Construction Company, Inc. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $1,225,000. The next bid is from, is that ELA Group, Inc. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $1,154,675. The next bid is from Integrity, Inc. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $1,188,700. The next bid is from J. Reed Contractors, Inc. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $1,084,000. And the last bid is from McKinnis Brothers Construction, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for $1,184,500. 1-184-500. I ask that you approve the reading of these bids.
Counsel, please cast your vote.
Comments from the audience?
Oh, comments from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P-20-15, Max Bayu Rehabilitation Project.
The engineer's estimate is $1,120,000.
It's being funded partially from the 2019 Riverboat Capital Fund and the 2014 Utility Bond Issue. There are two addendums. The first addendum provided the list of attendees to the mandatory pre-bid meeting, made changes to specs, documents, drawings, and questions and answers. The second addendum made changes to the specs. The first bid is from 2R Construction LLC. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $1,138,137. The next bid is from Axis Construction LLC. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $1,050,000. The next bid is from CWNW Contractors, Inc. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $951,104. The next bid is from David Lawler Construction, Inc. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $1,491,760. And the last bid is from Yorwick Construction Company, Inc. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $949,056.50. I ask that you accept the reading of these bids.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC petitioner, The Fortis Company LLC. Location 5017 Shed Road, Bossier City, Louisiana 71111. They request conditional use approval for a small cell tower for new singular wireless.
So move.
Any questions from the audience? Anybody here from the MPC? Main person.
Good afternoon, Carlotta Askew-Brown with MPC. The Fortis Company came before us for 5017 Shed Road for a macro cell tower. This is, well, for a small cell tower. This is a targeted solution for increasing of cell tower and booster stations, so we'll see a lot more of these as we see more cell service, more alarm systems in the Bossier City jurisdiction. So, the MPC approved it with no opposition.
Any questions from the council? Thank you, Carla. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance declaring an emergency does exist affecting the health and safety of public, of the public regarding acquisition of emergency medical supplies for first responders as a result of the COVID-19 outbreak and authorizing appropriation of an additional $200,000 from the 2020 EMS Capital and Contingency Fund to purchase medical supplies. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Is number four remaining?
No, you skipped four.
Uh-uh. That was four. I don't think so.
That was four.
No, that was five.
She just read five.
I think we skipped four.
Yes. Yeah, our last one was number three, the zoning word change.
Oh, mine, it's number four.
It was correct on mine.
Really?
Do y'all have the updated one?
I don't know.
Yeah, now, the paper copy doesn't match the computer.
Yeah, the paper, the paper copy is the, is the one that was sent out. The $70,000 I have on my paper copy is number five.
I have it on my paper copy is number four. They're just reversed.
They got reversed somehow.
I have it as number five.
They're both on there, though. They're both on there. So, this one was the emergency ordinance, first and final reading.
All right. Did we have a motion and second on that?
I make a motion.
Second, whatever.
All right, good. Questions from the audience? Counsel? Please cast your vote.
I think that had to do with that late afternoon change that I had to make on the agenda on Thursday. It got, kind of got swapped around.
Yeah, no worries.
Okay. Introduce an ordinance to reappropriate $70,000 from the public service complex generator project to the Bossier animal control building project with funds from both projects being in the 2020 sales tax capital fund. Our three.
Any questions from the, in just a second, I was going to ask, any questions from the Stacy.
Yes, sir. The garage bought a new generator that's funded out of the same fund as we're asking, we're basically moving that $70,000 that was in excess to redo the, their old generator to give to the new animal control building.
That one contemplated in the original bid?
No, the, the generator wasn't in the original bid.
Any other questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Number six. Introduce an ordinance to fund the East Texas Street Industrial Drive and Airline Drive Sewer Rehab Project at a cost of $1,214,000 to come from the Sewer Capital and Contingency Fund. First reading.
So move.
Questions from the audience? Questions from the council?
Oh, God, not again.
Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate $350,000 to come from the 2017 LCDA bond to match the $350,000 provided by the Public Service Commission to replace the lighting inside and out at the CenturyLink Center. First reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? I'd just like to personally thank Commissioner Campbell, Foster Campbell, for securing these funds for us, and want to let him know we appreciate everything he does. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate $390,000 from the Sales Tax Capital Improvement Fund to be used to replace lighting at the police building and public service complex with energy-efficient LED fixtures with $296,858 to be reimbursed to the city by the Louisiana Public Service Commission's Public Entity Energy Efficiency Program. First reading. God bless you.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? And again, on behalf of the council, we'd like to thank, again, Commissioner Campbell for this additional funding. It certainly enhances the city and saves electricity and does a lot of good for us, so, thank you again. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carry. Introduce an ordinance to appropriate $500,000 to come from the Water Capital and Contingency Fund to be used for the purchase of additional water meters. First reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate $250,000 to come from the Hotel Motel Tax Fund to be used for the operational needs of the CenturyLink Center. First reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to declare certain movable equipment owned by the city of Bossier City a surplus to the city's need and provide for donation to the city of Menden Police Department in accordance with law. First reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Adopt an, adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a meter reader for the customer service department. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one police officer for the Bossier City Police Department. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the promotion of an officer to a sergeant, a sergeant to a lieutenant, and a lieutenant to a captain. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution to approve the use of Bossier City Sewer to serve the property at 5486 Airline Drive, the Landpoint Office Building, with the property being located outside of the Bossier City limits. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Questions from the council?
So, this is, they're going to pay the, is it 50% more?
Impact fees?
Did they pay the impact fees too, Ben?
Yeah, the impact fee is separate from the 50% surcharge, so it's two different charges on that.
I have a motion by Mr. Williams and a motion, a second by Mr. Harvey.
Any further discussion? Please cast your vote.
Public hearing concerning the city of Bossier City's 2020, 2024 application to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for funding under entitlement status, under authority of Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1920... authority of Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, and a substantial amendment to the City of Bossier City's fiscal year 2019 action plan for community development block grant funds, and the city's application to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for funding under entitlement status, under authority of the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, and Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974.
Counsel, we have two different parts to the public hearing. The first part is the 2020, 2024 consolidated plan and a 2020 action plan, and you've seen most of that already. We received $42,286 more than we thought we were going to get, so we had to work it into the annual action plan. We had one sub-recipient that was inadvertently left off of the list, so we added that sub-recipient in there, too. And that's the only difference that we have, so.
This public hearing open to the public for any comment? Any questions from the counsel regarding Mr. Brown's comments? All right, we hereby close this public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
I got one more, one more section to it. That was the first part. And the second part is an amendment to the 2019 annual action plan to cover the CARES Act funding that we got through the block grant deal. It's called CDVG CV funds, and we got $317,112 for that, for, to help with COVID-19 problems that we had. And it has to filter through the community development block grant, follows most of the same rules that they had, as far as what you can do and can't do. They did waive the amount of money or the limit on the funds that you could spend for public services. So we have, you know, we came up with four uses. We put it out for RFPs and got some sub-recipients to give us an RFP for career and jobs development, because I think we're going to need that. We put quite a bit of money into that. We'll have to work out the details to make sure it serves the population that we're going to have, that are going to be looking for jobs. And then we got the special need transportation, which we have now, which Community Services does, and they need to be able to do that and still meet the COVID-19 requirements for spacing and cleaning and things like that. This would cover that, and possibly they'll have to make more trips because they'll have to space, you know, people out, and they're all at-risk people that they carry anyway. Anyway, we're going to have some loss mitigation and home retention counseling and help in that, too, from, and the, and then we'll have some, possibly some small business forgivable loans to help people retain jobs, help companies retain jobs and things, and they'll be forgivable instead of being a straight grant. That way, we can ensure that they do retain the jobs, and we get the reports and see if they actually did do that, prove it to HUD and whoever else. And then we got some administrative funds in there to administer the program, possibly get contracts drawn up if we need to, so. So that's all I have on that.
That covers it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further comment from the audience or questions? Any comments from the counsel regarding those additional funds? Bob, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
As the record show, the public hearing closed at 3:34. Adopt a resolution supporting the city's application to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for funding under entitlement status, under authority of Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974. First and final reading.
So move. First by Mr. Irwin, second by Mr. Larkin. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the counsel? Please cast your vote.
Mr. Garby, are you still there? I have it. Motion carries. Adopt a resolution, adopting an amendment to the fiscal year 2019 action plan for community development block grant funds, and a resolution supporting the city's application to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for funding under entitlement status, under authority of the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Securities Act, and Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Questions from the counsel? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution commending Bossier City Police and Fire First Responders for carrying out essential tasks during the unprecedented time of crisis created by the COVID and civil unrest. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? I think it would be appropriate, Phyllis, if you concur, if you would please read that for the record.
Let me grab it real quick.
I think it's important
Yes.
For all in the audience and those citizens in Bossier City, if they hear these words, they were eloquently drafted and, I think, are truly applicable to our community, especially given the times that we're in today.
Whereas the Bossier City Police and Fire Department serve the citizens and have shown bravery and courage by putting themselves at risk while dealing with, with the public during COVID-19 and this time of civil unrest, and whereas these first responders daily serve to protect the citizens of Bossier City and to ensure that our community is protected from any issue that may put it, put the public at risk. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Bossier City in regular session convened, does hereby recognize and commend all members of the Bossier City Police and Fire Departments for their professionalism, vigilance, and self-sacrifice in carrying out the most essential task during this unprecedented time of crisis created by COVID-19 and civil unrest.
Glad for all of y'all to join. We thank y'all.
Both chiefs, to make sure you pass that on to, when you can, to everyone in your departments, too.
So I have a motion by Mr. Free and a second by Mr. Harvey.
Any comments from the audience? Any further comments from the counsel? Please cast your vote.
Approve report of change order number one for the miscellaneous sewer lift station project for an increase of $28,045.43. Total contract with change order $871,245.43.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Questions from the counsel? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approve report of change order number three for the sewer subbase NBC14 project, an increase of $545,232.44. Total cost of contract with change order $3,084,904.87.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Comments from the counsel? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approve parade permit fee waiver for Green Acres Place HOA July 4th parade, Saturday, July 4th, 2020.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Questions from the counsel?
Mr. President, I don't really have a question. It's more of a statement. This is not the first one that we have been asked to approve after the fact, and I think the counsel really needs a fair opportunity to review these and approve them before the event takes place. So I'm just not real clear on the process and how the process notifies this group that the application needs to be submitted in enough time for the counsel to have the appropriate time to put it on the agenda, review it, and vote on it.
I've got a copy of the ordinance, if you don't mind.
Yeah, go ahead.
And I spoke with David and, thanks a lot, a couple of other guys. Just, I got a copy of the ordinance and it's, you know, we talked about doing some changes to it, so I'm kind of marking it up, going, I'll pass it around to y'all when I get through with it, to make sure everything's okay, you know, about the insurance and when the, I think it's 60 days right now.
60 days right now. It's supposed to be submitted 60 days before the event.
So somehow, and I agree, somehow we've got to get that information out to these groups, you know. Anyway, we'll just work on that, and we'll work with the chief to see what else we could do to, you know, if it's not 60 days, I understand. Get the parade permit, but the insurance is the main thing, too.
Right.
Comments or notice, Mr. Harvey? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll find resolve to this issue. Any other further comments? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask, before we read this last statement, Ben, do you know there got the fence around that addition out there, the Mike Woods Park that we talked about? It is? Okay. Thank you.
The only announcement that I have is that all agenda items for the next council meeting, which will be on July 21st, need to be in the office by July 17th at noon.
All right. Any further comment? Everyone have a great week. Meeting adjourned.